Okay, well, let's call this meeting of the Planning Commission meeting of September 17th, 2020 to order. We'll call.
Van Meter, I don't see him. Peterson advised me she'd be about 10 minutes late. Crawford?
Here.
Vlacity?
Here.
Fox?
Here.
Casper?
Here.
Mans?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. So, the next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Anybody want to make any changes, or are we approve it the way it is?
Yes.
That we approve it? Or Cindy, you got something?
If we have time at the end of our discussion items, I would like to add one about location of sheds. So, and this is, we haven't met since June, so it's been a while. And even though we didn't have, we don't have any action items, there's some few things I want you to think about before our next meeting. And I could have some proposed amendments at that time, but I just kind of want to review them and why we're thinking about them and what's going on. I kind of thought Karen, our new interim city manager, would join us just to introduce herself, but I don't see her here. So, if we could add that one item to the agenda, I would appreciate it.
Very good. Oh, all right. So, can we, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Are there any issues with it?
No, I make a motion that we approve the agenda for September 17th.
A second?
Okay.
Yeah. Motion by Marsha, seconded by Fox. I will call the roll. Casper?
Yes.
Fox? Crawford?
Yes.
Mans?
Yes.
Peterson, not here. Van Meter, not here. Vlacity?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And next, we have the approval of the minutes from our June 25th meeting. Were there any issues with those minutes that anyone identified, or should we be approving them as they are?
I have, I have a few. One's a minor correction and one's clarification.
Okay.
On the second page, or on the next page. Yeah, the very first paragraph, the abbreviation for Water Street South, it should be WSS.
Oh, good catch.
Good catch.
Yeah, and then the, the, the second paragraph, the motion below that. Was that to allow amusement arcades as special land use?
To approve?
Because it doesn't specify whether it's like by right or special, or special land use. That look, I know from the matrix, like. The only change really.
Yep, it was special land use.
Okay. So, I mean technically, the city center was the only one changing because that was like not permitted. And we were a lot, and we were matching that up with Water Street East and Water Street South that already included. But I don't, it doesn't hurt to add it.
No, that should be clarified.
Yeah.
So, can you read, say it how you are going to?
A motion was made by Casper, seconded by Fox, to allow amusement arcades as a special land use in the city center, et cetera.
Okay, thank you for that. Anything else on these minutes that we need to be? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes with that change?
My second?
That was Marsha. That was Casper. So, we have a motion by Crawford, supported by Casper, and I will call the roll. Crawford?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Mans?
Yes.
And Vlacity?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So, at this time, we'll open a public comment section of our meeting on agenda items only. So, if you are with us tonight and you'd like to make a public comment, if you could just state your name and where you live and limit your comments to three minutes. Cindy?
If there's anybody here to speak specifically about fence heights, I would really prefer to hear from them now during the public comments rather than after we get into the discussion. Nobody?
Hi, can you see me? My name is Janie Goodwin.
We got you.
Okay, great. I would like to speak with you about fence height tonight, and I appreciate your time. Concerning corner lots. I believe that Holland has passed some good measures along this that are outlined here. A corner lot can be safely have a higher fence as long as it's 20 feet back from the corner of the property. So, it is not a safety factor at all. And the issue, I think, is that a lot of corner lots have the side yard as the major part of their yard. And we'd like to be able to see that be a yard that we could have as a privacy as well. As most lots in town have a backyard that they can fence in. And it's, it's a large part of a corner lot that I think should be considered as a value to the property to be able to use it for a privacy, for pets, for children, at a higher fence height than 36 inches. So, I think that's all I have tonight. I appreciate giving me the time to speak, and I thank you for that.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your comment. Sorry for that. It took me a minute to get unmuted there. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during our public comment section on agenda items? Okay, so hearing no comments, we'll end the public comment portion and we'll move on to old business.
I would like to note that Mike Van Meter is joining our meeting at 7:08.
Hi, Mike.
Muted.
Are you muted, Mike?
Aaron, can you unmute him?
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we heard you. Hi, Mike.
Technology with old people.
We don't have to say names like that, Dan Fox.
I'm myself a moment.
Yeah, right. I hear you. So, do we have old business? It didn't look like it, Cindy.
No, no old business.
Okay, so we're on to new business then, and we've got some discussion items here under new business. The first of which is fence height, which we just heard some comments about. Cindy, you want to fill us in a little more?
I'll give you a little background on this. Corner lots have two front yards, which are 20 feet away from the property line. And on corner lots where there's not a sidewalk, the appearance is from your, from your window or from your back door, that your yard goes all the way to the street. But we all know that's not the case. The right-of-way goes, cuts into that quite a bit. And corner lots that are narrow and deep with outside walks have a lot of room that they could safely have a fence up higher than six, higher than three feet, but under the current ordinance, it's not. Aaron, can you go to the page that has the drawing of the, the yards? I, yeah, that was the one, backup one. Page seven, I guess, that one. Unfortunately, when you have a corner lot, you have double whammy of setbacks. And on the drawing that's on the left on the corner lot, you can see if you get closer to the sidewalk with a six-foot fence, you're not going to block any visibility from the intersection. And if the lot is small to begin with, you end up with a pretty small fenced-in area. And if you have trees or landscaping that you have to navigate, it makes it even tougher. So, I went ahead and copied the City of Holland ordinance, which I'm very familiar with, and they've even updated it since I've been there. And they do allow the fence to encroach into the side yard on a side street to, to a I didn't get the setback there. Oh, to half the required yard. So, that would be an extra 10 feet if you could get out of the in a fenced-in area. And you can see on the interior lot, the house on the right, they get their whole entire yard that they can have a six-foot fence. So, it's.
Cindy, state, state that again. What, 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 what does Holland allow?
If you look on the picture on the left or the drawing on the left, the hashed area is an area where you can have a six-foot fence. And it can encroach half of the required yard. So, you can see the street that's on the left, the one that's going north and south. Normally, the setback there would be 20 feet. But that's a lot of yard to give up just because you're a corner lot, because you're far enough.
Between, the, the normal setback is 20 feet between the street and where you can allow the fence.
Yes, it would be kind of lined up with the back of the house. So, you, you lose out a lot of your, your lawn area by not being able to have a fence in that area. We recently had a sale almost fall through or fall through because they couldn't have a fence large enough for their large dogs. They didn't want a three-foot fence because they might not stay in, and other dogs could come in. And there's absolutely no reason to not allow it in that area that I can think of.
So, can I get just a little bit of clarification still? I'm sorry. I feel like we're talking about maybe, are there two dimensions to this issue? One is whether you get a six or a three-foot fence, and one is whether it can be 10 or 20 feet from the line?
Yes, and I'd like to make a note that Chris Peterson has joined us. Just now, Chris.
Hi, Chris.
7:13. Yeah, normally, a six-foot fence would have to be set back 20 feet from that property line, under what our ordinance requires today, to make it more flexible.
The side property line that.
The side property, the side, side yard on a side street, the long, the long side of the property, not, not the width, but the long side.
So, the blue line, the, the, the vertical line that's over there on the left side of the back of the house.
By the street, yep, closer to the street, that one.
Okay, is that the one you're talking about? It has to be 20 foot from the street?
Right.
And, and is it, is where you're marking it now, the 20 feet, or is that with?
That's showing that, that the fence can encroach one half into the required yard. This is directly out of the City of Holland ordinance. And I chose it because I'm familiar with it. But a lot of places allow that encroachment of a fence into a side yard on a side street.
Oh, I see, halfway between the end of the house and the, the yard.
Right.
Okay.
Karen can't see me, but.
Yeah, that jut out is the end of the house.
That's the extra yard you could catch.
So, rather than a fixed distance, they're saying you, you're allowed to go halfway.
Yep.
So, if, if that was only 10 feet, they could go five feet.
Right.
And if it's 20 feet, they could go 10 feet.
Yep. And most of our front yards, most of our setbacks for a side yard on a side street is either 20 or 25. I don't think we have any less than that.
Okay.
Cindy, is it, is it 20 feet from the property line or 20 feet from the street?
Property line. And that's what's so misleading when you're on a corner lot and you look out to the street, your grass or your lawn goes all the way up to the pavement.
Correct.
Sometimes there's a sidewalk there and sometimes there's not.
On the sidewalk to the road, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the first part.
The city has an actual easement or ownership of the sidewalk to the road in that diagram.
Inside of the sidewalk to the other side of the other sidewalk on the other side of the street, and that's the right-of-way.
The 20-foot setback, is the 20-foot setback requirement just because of aesthetics looking? Or is it because if there's ever a need for that space, you don't want to?
It doesn't, it cannot extend into the public right-of-way under any circumstances. But you take care of it, you mow it, it's your grass, and you can't build in the right-of-way. And a lot of your grass on a corner lot on a narrow street is in the right-of-way. You can't use that. The reason for the setback is for traffic visibility at an intersection or a driveway. And that's the, that's the reason for the 20-foot setback. You don't want a six-foot fence going up to the property line or even anywhere near the property line, near an intersection or a driveway. Because if you're backing out and somebody's walking on the sidewalk, you don't want to run them over.
Innocent, correct, okay.
And I apologize, I printed out my packet and promptly left it on my desk, so I'm relying on Erin to, to get us through this. But if you are interested, I can draw up a draft ordinance for Saga Talk with some similar kind of provision. And it just would allow people to have better utilization of their own property. Without compromising.
I mean, it makes sense to me. The, the, the other thing that I like if you go to the next page that I saw, you know, like for safety, you know, traffic reasons at an intersection. My understanding is, so like, so what they're doing is drawing like really where the visibility concern area is. Is that what this is depicting?
Yes.
Exactly.
Like if you're driving and, and there's a lot, you know, a corner lot and the house is like really long. When you're 100 feet back, you're not, visibility on the cross street isn't an issue. It's like when you get closer to the cross street. And so, I think, is this saying like within that hash mark, you can't have anything that's more than like three-foot height to keep that?
You got it.
Yeah. See, that, and that makes sense for safety reasons to me.
Is there any other concerns that you would like me to pay attention to while I put that draft ordinance together?
Cindy, is that the totality of the Holland ordinance?
No, there's a lot more. I think I gave you the whole section, though, in your packet.
Yes.
We also have.
If we allow the 10-feet setback, that would apply to all properties, whether, whether there's a city sidewalk or not.
Correct. Of corner lots. It would just apply to corner lots.
So, if they had a fence going back just 10 feet off the road, and you're driving down the road, would you have, is 10 feet enough to be able to see them coming out of the driveway? I know if there's, if there's a, a city property and then a sidewalk and then additional 10 feet, that's plenty of time to see a car backing out. If there's, and you're only 10 feet in from the road, is that sufficient?
I, I think it's very sufficient.
Anybody else have a comment or a question?
I guess I'm a little dense yet. The blue lines, to begin with, this is sort of a, seems like sort of an atypical example where the driveway comes out at, you know, in the side street rather than what seems to be the front of the house. And then, could they have in the front yard also the same fence with this blue line? Could this blue line extend all the way through the house and into the front yard? Could it not?
It would just be the side yard on a side street, the long dimension of the lot, not the short dimension.
I mean, well, couldn't they have an additional fence in toward, between the driveway and the tree?
No, you're getting too close to the corner. You want, you want to keep it in the backyard. You want to keep it away from the intersection as much as possible, but still let them have usable.
According, according to this clear vision area, the clear vision area is sort of a diagonal that would, well, what I'm getting at following up on this clear sight distance is if you had two six-foot fences with just the driveway in between, it seemed like it would maybe be harder to see a car backing out of there.
Correct. And I would say that in order to have a six-foot fence in that area that's right next to the driveway, it would have to be at least five feet away from the driveway because that's just a little too tight.
Is that in the Holland? Is there a provision for that?
It's not in the Holland. It's not in the Holland, but it would be in my proposed draft.
Okay.
Okay, that, that there would have to be a five-foot setback from
The driveway.
From the driveway for, for a, a six-foot fence.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Sounds like I, we have a consensus for me to draw up a draft that we can take action on at the next meeting. I will see if I can get it published in time for the next meeting because we do have to have a public hearing, and there are publication deadlines. I think I can still publish it, get it out on Monday, and we'll be in time for our next meeting.
Cindy, should there be anything that says that the fence, the six-foot part of the fence along the side cannot be any closer than like 25 feet off of the front property line? Because in this photo, there's a lot of homes where they build the garage at the front of the house, and they put their bedrooms in the back. And if that, if that driveway was right along the very front of the house, would you allow the six-feet fence all the way up to the driveway? I would assume it'd be okay because the house has a setback 20 feet anyway. But should there be a minimum three, you know, minimum requirement from the, from the front of the home that you have to have three, three feet maximum to a certain point regardless of where your driveway is?
I, I think that is in the Holland ordinance, and this drawing is just kind of a representation of what it means. But I don't see any problem if the driveway is not on that side of the house, and the driveway were at the front of the house. There would be no reason that you couldn't extend that more towards the south in this picture.
Correct. Yeah, as long as you stay with it, and I'd say probably, I think I saw something there where they said 25 feet to kind of create a
Yep.
clear line as you approach the intersection.
Yep.
But in no way do we want a six-foot fence in the front of the house, do we?
No.
No, it should not extend past the front of the house, no matter what.
Right, and I can tell you who proposed. That this, this fence issue was proposed by your former vice chair of the Planning Commission, which was Kate McCallum. So, that helps, but.
I was going to say on the, on page six, on the previous page, it does see the front yard. The height, it's saying an open fence can be four feet and a solid fence is three feet, so.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't propose adding that, but if you wanted me to, I certainly could.
Oh, the, the difference between open and solid.
Yeah.
I think our ordinance is three feet.
Three feet in the front.
I know Cindy, the notion of mandating only open fences in front yards sort of appeals to me. Because what you're knocking out are solid three-foot fences or solid three-foot brick walls, which seem, I don't, I can't even think of an example of that in town. I don't know why you'd want to encourage it.
I mean, that allows solid fences in the front yard period, even if they're only three feet high?
Correct.
Okay, I don't, we'll put it in there, and once we get the draft done, then we can pick all the nits and make amendments and get it the way that you want it. I'll present you with the facts, and you present me with your decision.
Anybody else want to chime in before we move on? Okay. I think we're done with that topic. I guess our next item for discussion are pop-up patios.
Pop-up patios have been a real long discussion item. We've talked about them quite a lot. They're, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission has offered to convert your temporary liquor license for a pop-up patio to a permanent license for a pop-up patio if your jurisdiction allows for it. Our ordinance will expire in October 31, and most likely will be extended to November 30 barring any plowable snowfalls. And there is real interest from the restaurant owners to extend that to continue that in the spring to allow the pop-up patios. Now, it's ultimately going to be the city council's decision, but I wanted to give you the opportunity to weigh in on what you thought about the loss of parking spaces versus the vibrant, active pop-up patios. And there's a, a lot of different ways we can talk about that. Are we discouraging development by allowing them to rent-free use the public parking spaces? So, they don't have to upgrade or expand on their property. However, if COVID is still in effect and they're limited to 50% of the floor area, I think there would be a lot of support for the, the pop-up patios. So, I'm just looking for some general comments as council is going to be weighing in on this, and that's going to be ultimately their decision. But if anybody has any ideas, concerns, or comments, I sure would like to know about them because you're a very creative and thoughtful group.
Cindy, I would give you that as long as the governor's COVID mandates are in place, I sort, I sort of absolutely lean to trying to help the restaurants. When those mandates, one hopes inevitably are lifted, I think the game immediately changes. And then, we have private business on public right-of-way without compensation to the city, and that's not acceptable as far as I'm concerned. One consideration.
Okay. Chris, did you want to add anything? Because you've been kind of involved in this discussion.
Yeah, Jane and I had met with Cindy and a couple of the restaurant owners to look into this. And it's kind of something that is struggling really all around the world, especially with people that have windy winters and lots of snow. Everybody seems to think it's a really good idea, and obviously, the pop-ups saved businesses this summer. We were blessed with beautiful weather, and everybody really liked it. The comments always were, really seems like a tourist town now. They're fun, they're well-done, and like to do it. Moving them into November, that's going to be the challenge with the snow, and we haven't kind of worked that out. In addition, the heaters, we've run into some things with fire department about what kind of propane or electric heaters you can have. But I do believe that, like Dan said, as long as COVID is in there, and I don't see it going away before next year, they're going to want to, they're going to want to hit it in March, and I can't blame them, you know, at that point. So, I think anything we can do to do it safely that benefit our, our restaurants is fine. The parking is an issue. There's no getting around that. We took up about 40 spaces. I did notice, because we drive around all the time, up at the, up at the high school, there wasn't a lot of parking, it was very seldom full. One of the issues, though, that we need to maybe look a little more long-term is the bus doesn't do that route, that circle anymore. And I don't know what the restrictions are on the inner urban for distancing and masks and everything, but they're doing a call-on-demand. And I think that, that if we're going to do this and the traffic continues to do it, then we're going to need to look at reevaluating the inner urban that has a, has a back-and-forth route. But those are all kind of questions. We're going to meet on Thursday as our workshop, and pop-up patios will be on the discussion. So, I'm really interested in hearing Planning Commission's comments to take there.
Yeah, this is Marsha. Yeah, just a few thoughts, and it kind of, some of it echoes yours.
Yeah, this is Marsha. Yeah, just a few thoughts and it kind of, some of it echoes yours, Chris, but yeah, I mean, I think that it was, they were very, you know, very beneficial, the pop-ups, you know, in the summertime. And, you know, it was something that was, you know, absolutely needed and beneficial for you know, the restaurant owners and also, you know, the tourists, you know, that come here. You know, I guess there's a point where, you know, more isn't always better. I did set, you know, I know there's NOAA data and I sent a file showing like some weather data in Douglas, Michigan. And, you know, the snow season typically it said begins November 12. And so that you are running into, you know, really how much, how much traffic and business, you know, is, are we really trying to cater to with these restaurants in November, especially late November? You know, if there's heater issues to versus, you know, if there, you know, snow starts to fall and you're impeding foot traffic on sidewalks and people are having to go around into the streets and the snowplows can't get through. So I mean, there is this balance. There's a point where, you know, does it makes, you know, doesn't really make that much sense to block off for a whole month? You know, potentially maybe you could, you know, make it through like, I think the November 13th or something, you know, a couple more weeks or I guess I'm just not sure what, you know, the big demand is going to be for pop-ups in November and balancing that against the potential weather impacts. And people are less willing, I mean, at least I know I am, I'm less willing to walk when it's not sunny outside. I'd rather park closer to my destinations. And so, you know, those 40 parking spaces probably become more valuable in November and December and January. So I guess those are my thoughts.
I, I think realistically, as we go through October, the restaurants are going to, it will be a test for them to see if it's a benefit to stay open for another month or not. October can be also kind of bad weather and we
Cold.
We locked out this summer with almost every single day being beautiful, sunny and raining only at night. And that really made a huge difference on the downtown traffic. I'm not so sure that it will do the same in October and November, but I've only had two pop-up patios contact me about this that want to stay open. I have one that contacted me and said, it'll be a cold day when I'm open in November. They're not going to, they have no intention of opening in November. I think Morrow's closes. Yeah, so.
The Olive Mermaid, the whole building shuts down for the winter.
So.
Oh, sorry Cindy.
The November thing, I think we're going to be able to deal with it at the council level. Question is, what do we want to do in March? Do we want to let them come back? I think what Dan said is very true. As long as the COVID is in effect, it, it can help save their business rather than going out of business. But I want to hear your creative ideas about what to do in March and through next summer.
Stephanie?
Well, I had one thought and I heard this over in the Douglas area too, from the retail, the galleries when the restaurants wanted to do pop-up. And that was this takes away very precious parking spaces from people who want to, you know, park near our stores. And they can't bring their stuff outside. So, you know, I think there's going to be a balance between pleasing all of the retail stores, some of whom are not, don't sell products that lend themselves to coming out into the right-of-way, which we granted them, or the, that sliver of sidewalk, space between the sidewalk and the roads. Some took advantage of that, some didn't. But if you start taking up parking spaces, you know, once, once the 50% restriction or if we go to 75 or whatever, as long as there's restrictions, I think there's a better case for it. But I have a feeling some of the retail businesses won't be as happy with a more permanent pop-up patio situation with shrinking of 40, 40 spaces on an ongoing basis.
One thing I wanted to say too is that the liquor commission, you can't do a tent to expand and serve liquor outside of your building. So the only place a tent would be available would be if you're going to be, would be like uncommon grounds because they don't serve liquor out there. And then once that enclosed, it falls within the 50% regulation that the indoor seating does too. So that might turn quite several of the restaurants away because you can't have liquor in it, in an enclosed tent. Or Eglow or, I don't know, Bus, whatever.
Who else? Anybody else want to give their thoughts?
Cindy, is it? Go ahead.
Oh yeah, I was just going to say, you know, but my memory tells me March isn't, isn't the greatest month either in Michigan. And I don't know, it just seems like, you know, maybe again, the balancing, the transition between cold weather, bad weather and people less willing to walk distances to get to a destination and, you know, having the parking available in, in the worst weather months is a balance against, you know, is there really going to be that many people that are going to eat outside in March? So, I mean, I guess my inclination is to lean towards April to start, so.
I think they're looking at March because of St. Patrick's Day. Is, and the, the normal pub crawl. I don't know if that's
Couldn't that just be a special one? I mean, they do that in Lansing, you know, that they allow outside during it could be a one-day event thing.
And one of the things that, partly to Marsha's point, I think, one of the things the restaurants have not experienced because of the good weather is what happens when you have worst straight days of, pick your dreadful weather, cold rain, snow sleet or whatever, that are inhospitable for outdoor activities. And then, and then you have all this space in front of your restaurant looking pretty much dreary as people are desperate to get inside, get out of the cold, get out of the rain, whatever. So, you know, I know I, I can just almost hear restaurant owners saying, no, we want the patio, pop-up patios for as long as we can get them, as, as expanded as we can get them. No, no, you know, end of story, but I don't think if they actually got that, they would be very happy with the consequences. You have a bunch of chairs stacked up out front with snow on them or, you know, ice hanging off of tables or whatever. And you got to take, you know, that's your problem to take care of. It's not going to be fun and that's not going to, you know, it's not going to, it's inevitable that's going to happen. Just question how long and how often.
I didn't hear you.
Pop-ups, like Dan was saying, I think most of us will agree, it's been a positive. When tourists come into town and they see them, the ones that, when I've had guests, they see it as a positive. The Sagatuck has allowed it because they see it as being business-friendly and we want to try to, you know, help, help the businesses. The idea of the parking and this, if you have snow and you have the snowplow issues, that's, that's where I would say it could become an issue. And I was wondering, since all these are movable, if you said to the business, if there's three or more inches of snow, they are responsible for either moving the pop-up back into their, or actual property out of the street so it can be plowed? Or they have to actually shovel all the, the parking space that the snowplow cannot get to, that's before and after their pop-up.
Yeah, the problem is the snowplow has to get going about 25 miles an hour to be effective in snowplowing. And that's going to throw snow directly into their pop-up. I think what they're willing to agree to is if there's a forecast of plowable snow, if we give them 12 to 24-hour notice, they can take everything off the street and the snowplow can go by.
And that's what I was saying. I think that should be a requirement that if we have a forecast, it's going to be of, you know, it's an inch of snow, no big deal, but if it's going to be like two, three, four inches or more, that they would have to have everything moved off of the street to allow for the snowplowing. Otherwise you're going to end up losing all your parking spaces.
Yeah, and your, your pop-up patio is going to be knocked down by the force of the snow from the snowplow, if not by the snowplow itself, so.
And then that because of question, you know, they, I'm assuming that we would make the restaurant owners, it's their liability if they want to leave it up and take a chance of the snowplow damage unit, but the city would not be responsible.
Right. And if they would damage the snowplow, they would be responsible for that as well.
Okay.
But I think they're willing to agree to that. And like I said, I only have two that are interested in staying up. And if they want to plow the whole street between the two intersections, that would be one thing. I can see that kind of happening, but there's no place to store snow. When you've got your curbs all filled up with tables and chairs and it's going to be a problem after we get a plowable snowfall.
Exactly. But I think that, like it said, once you have that type of snowfall, you're going to kind of realize that there's not that many people, the demand is down. So is it really scary?
Right. Yeah, I mean, I was going to say, I had this whole, you know, is this coordination, you know, is with a question mark. But I mean, I don't know, like, one, is there somebody who, you know, with the city who's going to be, who monitor, yeah, I'm assuming the parks, they monitor like what's going to happen with the weather, but then you're going to have to have some coordination and some alerts to all the restaurant owners that, hey, there's, you know, snow predicted, you know, on these days and you're going to have to move your pop-ups and there's kind, I mean, I worked at Consumers Energy and, I mean, we do this statewide when there's, we have to stage things for storms and the coordination is, it's a lot of work and a lot of effort and I'm just trying to think, is this even, is it even worth it?
Well, we only have nine pop-up patios, so, and I do have them all on a email, group email. So if Scott calls me and says, we've got to get those pop-ups out there, it will take me 10 minutes to get them all notified.
Yeah, well, moving them to action may be the
Different thing. And if they, if they don't take them down, they'll lose their permit. I mean, we'll take the permit away right now. Okay.
Absolutely.
Some of those, I mean, we mandated or the city mandated, I believe, that the, the structures there that separate them from the street had to have, offer at least some substantive measure of protection. So there are big barrels and what have you delineating where the pop-up is. A grow, I think, is the one exception which seems to have gotten away with the flimsiest of.
Yeah, that, that's more of a MCC, MLCC regulation that they have to have barriers. Our barriers were just to demarcate the, the location, but the liquor control wants them to have boundaries that are definable, so they can't take their liquor into the street itself or walk it across the street or
Well, in any, in any case, what has developed in, in the majority of, that I can tell, Phil's or Bodie's or Wick's that I've seen are the kinds of things, you're not going to want to be moving like back and forth three or four times.
Once you take it down for a snowfall, I don't think you're going to put it back up. I mean, it's possible, but.
Anyone else want to chime in, have comments, thoughts?
Well, I, I might hate to miss out. I think everybody's stated what, you know, the consensus is. You know, we're certainly, I think, in favor of anything that will help the businesses at this time and you know, and anything that we can do. The, the problem being it's Michigan and the weather is likely not going to cooperate and you know, to the extent that you can work the, these things out with public works and administratively, I think it's a great idea, but like somebody said, it might be a point of diminishing returns. April, when you get into April, you've got a better shot at it, but I certainly did like the, believe it or not, I, after a while, I did like the look of what they did and it created a certain vibrancy downtown that was lacking before they were able to do it. I don't know, you know, God willing, we'll have some type of, of a resolution to this, this thing that we can get back to normal, but until then I'd be in favor of doing whatever we can.
You know, one thing to think about is this year, a handful of restaurants didn't encroach into any parking spaces. So the butler put all theirs on their grass. Phil's did a few, a very small one halfway through the year. Pumpernickels also did not come out into the sidewalk. Trying to think of who else did not. The barge, of course, didn't. So a handful didn't. But what would happen if next spring we said yes to these ongoing and all of those restaurants decided to set up in front of their available spaces, then we would be down quite a bit more than 40, right? I mean, we could really be looking at some serious parking space diminishing. If this idea caught on, let's say COVID's not around or it is, I guess it doesn't really matter, but if everyone, every business decided to take full advantage of the ability to do a pop-up patio next year, you would have a severe shrinkage of spot. So it's something to think about when you're deciding whether to approve it or not.
The three that I know of that did not take advantage are under the ownership of the same person and I suspect that he had something to say about that.
Well, is there anything else before we wrap up and move on to tiny houses? All right. Well, then we're going to wrap up and move on to tiny houses.
Tiny houses. People like tiny houses. We have, we have some zone districts where the lot size requirement is, is very big, like up to half an acre. And people don't want to build more McMansions, but they do want to have more bedrooms for their family or their extended family. And this is probably more a point of something to look towards our master plan when we just review our master plan. But just think about if instead of one gigantic McMansion on a parcel, you had four cottages. Just, just think about, you know, you'd have the same amount of square foot as your mansion or less, and with a lot less intrusive buildings and a more cottage, small-town feel. And I don't want you to make, I'm not going to draft any ordinances for this. I want you to think about it for when you do your master planning. And I guess we don't have Garnet. Dan went to the master plant, master planning series, I think, but that was put on by U of M or Michigan State. And I think it's a big picture thing. It's not a small thing that we're fixing something for somebody.
Right.
Not like the fences and it's not a little thing. It's a big planning picture item. So just keep it in the back of your mind that I've had inquiries about it and right off I thought, oh heck no, that's a bad idea. But after thinking about it for a while, it could be a good idea. So just keep it in the back of your mind and that's all I have to say about tiny houses.
Like old pipe cottages.
Yeah.
Okay. So do you not want discussion then right now, Cindy? You want to
No, I just want you to perk it around in your head and think about what it could look like, what it might look like, what, what would be the pros and the cons? And I don't really have any great things to bring you today, but we are going to be going through our master planning stuff in the next two or three years. But we are going to be going through our master planning stuff in the next two or three years. And it will, we'll also be in track communities, so we'll be looking at. Something in conjunction with Sagatuck Township and City of Douglas. Not that they can't be different, but. How can we be creative? Just like the pop-up patios.
Cindy, I know that you don't want discussion, but the one thing I would say for people to think about. When you start allowing three, four little cottages on a property. If they're, if the owner is doing it because they are going to use them all themselves, that's one thing, but if they're. Doing it so that they can have three or four vacation rental properties, that's different.
Yes, I agree, that's totally different and that can be part of the regulations. And right now, if you have a, an accessory dwelling unit on your property, you cannot rent it under a separate contract than the whole entire house. So we could mandate that, we could mandate all kinds of things, that they have to be under one utility, that they can never be divided. I mean. There's a lot of things that we could, we could put in place to protect some of that, but.
Right, because I'm assuming from a plumbing standpoint, they would have to have one line coming in, would all houses be hooked into that one line? Would they?
We could mandate that.
Okay, well, we'll be thinking about that.
If, if I might, I would point out that enforcement of that would be not easy. Enforcement over the lifespan of the structures might be, you know.
Right, I, I don't disagree. I think, you know, we have deed restrictions we can put on properties that's recorded with the register of deeds. There's other ways to, to address it, but if you had four cottages on your house and you were living in one of them. And somebody said, I'll give you two hundred dollars a night if I can rent one. How could you really say no to that? I mean, that would, that would be tough. You're right, it would be. Complicated enforcement problem, but.
Well, and it, what you find too is all of a sudden this person has an awful lot of relatives.
And they don't have a big enough house to fit them. Well, they do have a big enough, if they had a big giant house to fit them all in, then. Then you get the other effect, so.
My issue also is that many times, the reason why you have a half acre requirement or whatever the requirement is on the lot. Is that you put that requirement in for a density standpoint with the idea that you would have one house per every half acre lot. And so if you structured your master plan with the idea of density control and then you all of a sudden say, well, you can put three or four houses on one property. Well, then I might as well just say you could have a ten thousand square foot lot. As opposed to a forty-four thousand square foot lot, or whatever the, you know, half acre would be. So it's, you, you know, I have to kind of look at, well, why do they have a requirement as to a lot size? And if it's from a density standpoint, then it makes less sense to allow multiple units.
It's going to be a fun conversation, Cindy.
Well, I just thought I'd throw it out there and it's not really a discussion for today. I'm not going to bring you a proposal. I just want you to think about it and. Keep it in mind.
Okay, all right. Flood planes, lifting houses.
We have. We have two ordinances that kind of conflict with one another. The one ordinance says, and it's not in the zoning ordinance, so it's separate from the zoning ordinance. Says, we want to discourage development in, in the flood hazard zone. I can't remember, the flood hazard zone, and encourage people to mitigate flooding. By remediation. And if your house has the lowest floor elevation, less than five eighty-five above sea level. You are in the flood hazard zone. If you lift it out, if you lift it up and fill underneath and around, you have lifted it out of the floodplain. Safety hazard zone. And we also have an ordinance that says, if you take a house that's non-conforming. And you remove it, you have to make it conforming.
Cindy, before you keep going, can we have Erin bring some of those documents up from the back of the packet?
Are they in there?
I don't think so. I've only got ten pages here. This, this is.
You had to go to the.
You know what, Erin, if you could. Erin, if you could go to the zoning board of appeals packet for August nineteen. That's got some great photos in there. So what I really want to do is make it clear in our ordinance that if your structure is non-conforming because of setbacks. And you want to lift it up out of the floodplain, that is more important. Than moving the house to meet some of the setbacks. I just think that anything that we can do to encourage the mitigation, we get points for in our community safety rating. It helps lower the cost of flood insurance and it makes the property more valuable. If it's, if a house gets flooded. It's a goner. I mean, you can fix them, but if you don't lift them, you're just asking for another disaster. So if you do, if you spend more than fifty percent of the assessed value of the structure, not the property, but of the structure. You are required by the building code to lift it up out of the floodplain. And if we, if we put limitations on that, make it harder for people to lift it up. We're doing them a disservice and we're doing the city a disservice. So I would like to hear some comments on that. Stephanie probably knows more than. Than anybody else because she was involved in this zoning board of appeals decision. Which we're probably going to end up in circuit court over. But I think anything that we can do to encourage removing houses from the floodplain. Meets, meets our floodplain ordinance, which is chapter one fifty in your ordinance code, if you go online and look it up. It just says, no development in the floodplain. Safety hazard zone, or special hazard zone, but lifting up, you're out and you're safe.
Sorry, Cindy, what package did you say that was in?
The August nineteen zoning board of appeals.
But what you're saying is if you lift it up, then you've removed it from, you've moved it from being able to be non-conforming. It has to then move back down as conforming.
So like if your house is seven feet from the property line. And you're supposed to be ten feet from the property line. I don't think we should try to tell the person, you're doing the right thing, you're lifting up your house, but you're going to have to move it. I don't think that is the intent of the floodplain ordinance. And I really don't think that is, should be the intent of the non-conforming, especially if you're moving it. Out of one yard and into another.
What, what do you mean by that, moving it out of one yard and into another? That doesn't apply to the case in August, did it?
No, it did not, but it could have. I mean, the original discussion was to move it closer to the street and violate the front yard setback. And comply with the rear yard setback. That was the original discussion. So, believe me, I've watched that video many, many times to get the minutes right.
So, I mean, the bottom line is that you're trying to, there, you're making an improvement. And you're helping the owner by lifting it up, but then. But then we're, you know, we're potentially saying, oh, but, well, that's not good enough. You also have to move it back.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think that's.
When, when the original reason is because there's flooding.
Yep.
Yeah.
Go to some of the photos that show the, the water in the yard and right up to the back door of the house. I mean, you want to encourage them to lift out of the floodplain. You don't want to put obstacles in the way of lifting up out of the floodplain.
So can I just ask a couple of questions? I, I have an observation and I have a question. The question, I'll give you the observation first. So it seems to me like what we're trying to achieve with your suggestion is that. In the one specific case of a house. Needing to be lifted out of a floodplain, that sort of particular disaster, not any other disaster, but it's a floodplain. We want to exempt them from any of the restrictions about bringing any of their non-conforming features back in to conformity. That's what I.
That's, that's what I'm promoting, because you're not encroaching anymore, you're just encroaching in the airspace that was empty. The two or three feet above.
My question is then, how do we treat? The situation of a disaster called a flood. From a disaster called a fire or a wind event or any other event that without your, any. Completely outside of your control, you are now forced to do renovation and then we ask people.
You're not, you're not. If there's a, if there's a fire, you can build on the same footprint in the same location.
And people with non-conformity.
Yes.
Basically put the person who wants to just get out of the disaster called floodwaters. Into a higher threshold of conformity than we have any other type of disaster.
Exactly.
Good point.
That doesn't seem right.
I agree, and I would be happy to draft up some ordinance language that would correct that.
Cindy, are there any? Aspects of. Non-conformity. That would, that, which would not be necessarily onerous to correct and, and would be a good thing to correct. Or is it all related to linear measurements of, of, you know?
If you're closer than five feet to a property line, there might be some building code issues that you'd have to address. Because when you're five feet, then you have fire spread that you have to address when you rebuild. But that's kind of between you and the building inspector. There's some design features you can build in that will. Take that five feet away, so you don't have to worry about it. But other than that, I mean, the house is there in that location. If you make it two feet taller. It's not going to encroach anymore. And right now, if you encroach into a, a rear yard and you want to put an addition on the front. You can put an addition on the front without correcting the rear yard, the rear yard non-conformity. So it just doesn't seem logical to discourage somebody from improving it. It would be a disservice to them, it would be a disservice to the city because we get, that impacts our community safety rating. That we get from the ISO and it reduces your flood insurance costs.
Any else?
Cindy, I think that if you are keeping the original footprint, you should be, no question, be able to raise it or rebuild it. Now, if they decide that they're going to like pick it up and move it, then I think that when they replace it, if they were like too close to the property line. And if, if their lot allows for it, it should be placed within conformity. As opposed to being, you know, saying, well, it was once seven feet, you're supposed to be ten. Well, you're going to move it back thirty feet, go ahead and just keep it at the seven. If the property allows for it, if it's a movement. But if they're going to stay on the original foundation or the original floor plaque, then the raising. I can't see where that'd be an issue, or raising or rebuilding, like you were saying, if it's a fire or something, or something else.
Yeah, I, it, it kind of depends on what's the condition of the foundation underneath. Is it a reusable foundation? Does it have to be all torn out and rebuilt? But if they're reusing the foundation or even part of the foundation. They should be able to put it back right where it was, just like.
Usually, if there's one wall, if you maintain at least one wall in most cities, then you can call back the original foundation.
Yes, and I would be delighted to draw up a draft for our next meeting on that.
Okay.
I agree.
I'm in favor of it.
Okay, I will put something together for our next meeting. I think the last thing that we had was accessory buildings and sheds and garages. Much, much similar to the fence issue. There is. Garages and sheds are required to meet the same setbacks as the principal structure. I don't know any other jurisdiction that requires that. They allow you to go into the rear yard or the side yard with usually half the distance. Because garages and sheds, you don't, if you have a fifty-foot lot, you can end up putting the shed in the middle of the backyard. It can't be close to any property lines and it really, it really is not an attractive option for most people. And garages are nice for a lot of things, but one thing they help do is keep junk out of the yard, so. I would be happy to draw something up like that as well, but I wanted to hear if you had any concerns or. I mean, I can draw something up and you can look at it and go, sorry, you just wasted your time. We don't want that. And that, that wouldn't bother me at all. I don't have any. Skin on that stuff.
Don't have anything else going on, so.
No, I don't have anything else to do.
What are, what are the, what do you see as any or all potential downsides to letting a shed be so close to the property line?
I don't see any downside.
Does anyone else?
About the neighbor?
Well, if the neighbor had the same right, I don't, I still don't see any downside.
I can see a situation where if two neighbors decided to put their sheds five feet from the property line, you'd have a pretty narrow path over there. But I don't know if that's a bad thing. It's just that you'd have buildings super close to each other.
That, that would, they would still meet the ten-foot separation for a fire department access, so. If they're each five.
The shed issue is more like if you're one lot in from the lakefront. And, and you kind of have a semi-view because you can see between the houses and then somebody builds a shed in that space. You know, that's the person that's going to be upset by it. But, you know, they weren't guaranteed a view in the first place. That's the only thing I can think of where it would actually be an issue.
And we still have the same restrictions on, just isn't it one shed per lot?
Right now, we have no limitation on sheds per lot.
But you just have to clarify what's a shed, you know, it can't have bathrooms.
Right, it would have, it would have to be an accessory dwelling or accessory unit or accessory building. I'm sorry, I'm getting tired. It's the end of the day. It would have to be an accessory building used for storage of a vehicle, storage of your lawnmower, storage of your hula hoop. Storage of your jet ski.
But it might also be a dwelling unit, as Pete, a lot of people are doing is a full garage. And with a possible dwelling unit above, I mean.
We could limit that, that's, you know, it just depends how you draft your, your ordinance and what your regulations are.
Would this apply to, I assume this would not apply to attached garages.
It would not.
I thought sheds had a certain maximum that was much smaller than A D U minimums.
It depends what you call a shed, but what they call it is an accessory building. And if you're over two hundred square feet, you have to get a building permit. If you're under two hundred square feet, you just have to meet the zoning requirements, so, and it has to be a single story. It can't be two stories.
And if you're over the two hundred, are, do we have an upper limit?
I think I, that, I don't, we do have an upper limit that it can't be bigger than the primary structure. Can't have a bigger footprint than the.
Wow, really?
Yeah, so you could have a big.
Be bigger than the A D U.
It could be bigger than an A D U.
Is what, six hundred?
Yep.
That seems like a glitch in our.
Well, it, it kind of is, and I would like to just tackle it a little bit. I might not get it done for the next meeting, but I would like to. To tackle that. I think there's people who have a fifty-foot wide lot and if they have to put an accessory garage. Detached accessory garage, it's going to be right in the middle of their backyard. That's the only place they'll be able to put it because of setbacks. Tight. You know, we could say if your lot size is less than. Eight thousand twelve hundred square, eight thousand seven hundred and twelve square feet, then you get this exception. Or if your lot size is less than. Five thousand square feet, which we do have some of those, then you get this exception.
Oh, you might write the ordinance with that sort of an exception.
Yes, because it doesn't apply to everybody. I mean, there's lots, there are your two acre lots, there's no reason they have to go right up to the property line.
Exactly.
Cindy, I also think, to Rich's point earlier, in whatever definitions or redefinitions you give for sheds.
I think it's really important that it exclude, or that, that, whatever, however you phrase it, but that the shed may not have living space.
Correct.
Period, up, down, sideways, no.
We already have that in there. It's already in the ordinance. Pardon?
One story, is that what you said?
One story.
One story and, and no living space? And we said maybe an upper limit, but you're not sure? Is that what you're thinking?
Maybe we could say how many sheds you can have on your property. There, there is a maximum lot coverage that we have that might limit some of them, but, uh, I don't know, it's, it's, it's unlimited right now. If you wanted to have six sheds in your backyard, and you had enough room, you could have six sheds.
I have a question. Is anybody having trouble hearing Stephanie? She's very.
A little bit.
Come closer?
There.
Yeah, that's better.
Yeah. Thank you. So what's the difference between a shed and a tiny house then?
You're gonna say Chris, like. A tiny house would have plumbing, heating, kitchen, but a shed would not.
They might not look too different on the outside.
Yeah, yeah, it might not.
One would assume that, uh, there would probably be a market for tiny sheds then. That's a doghouse, Rich.
You can buy them at Menards, and they're made by Rubbermaid.
I, I've had a, lived in a 600-square-foot apartment for a long time, and, uh, I, I can't imagine that anything less than that would be particularly desirable.
Right.
Right, do you have what you need, or we, do we need to put any more?
I think so, I probably won't have that ready for the next meeting, but I would like to have it ready by spring.
Maybe we can talk about, since we've talked about some parameters otherwise on sheds. It's up to you, what are you going to do?
You may have noticed it's become very dark in my room.
Same here.
In your shed?
In my shed, yes, with my C.
You can have electricity in a shed.
So I may have trouble calling the roll, but I'll hold the paper up by the computer.
So we, do we have any communication?
No communications.
Reports of officers or committees? Do you think so? And number nine, any public comments now on any items at all, not, not necessarily just agenda items? If you do, state your name, unmute yourself, tell us where you live, and I keep your comments to three minutes, please. Okay, uh, we will wrap up the public comment section then, and we will, um, hopefully get a movement. That thing to adjourn, motion, not movement.
I move, we adjourn.
A second.
That was Rich and Steve.
Steve.
Okay, now I'll try to read in the dark. Crawford?
Yes.
Somebody else that starts with a C?
Casper?
Casper. And Mans?
Yes.
And Flacity. Ann Peterson.
Yeah.
And Van Meter, did I call you?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
And Fox.
And Fox.
And Fox, okay, Mr. Fox. See, I can't read in the dark. Fox, you, uh, great. Okay, motion carries.
All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you guys.
Thank you all.
Good evening.
Thank, thank you, Erin.
Yes, thank you, Erin, welcome aboard.
Yeah, thank you very much, happy to be here.